Good evening all, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Bryan City Board of Education, regular meeting on Monday, February fourteenth. You all would stand and get ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a root deep in justice for all.
Helen, welcome.
Scott. Ben, here. Devin.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Thank you.
I assume everybody had a chance to review the January organizational and regular meeting minutes, special meeting minutes as exhibited. Any additions or corrections? I'll accept the motion to approve.
Second.
Ben.
Yes.
Devin.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I don't expect any public participation at this time, so we'll move on to communication.
Yeah, thanks Dustin. First up, we have our four county reports, and this is submitted to us by Susan Rekeeler, our four county liaison, so she told us that there are many Bryan students doing great things this semester. They have students who placed in the top six at the Business Professionals of America Regional Contest, and they qualify for the state competition. So those students are Riley Modern and Erica Wistwitz. They are both in the Medical Office Technologies Program. There's also William Decatur and Jane Gates. They are both in Computer Networking and Cyber Security. And Nicholas Julian, who is in Computer Programming and Game Design. Congratulations to all of them. We also have students who have qualified for the Future Health Professionals State Competition. That's Haley Mosher, Anna Miller, Trinity Beaverson, Blaise Legenderfer, Mallory Frye, Lexi Allsqua, Megan Morris, and Jalen Paul. And all of those individuals are in the Health Careers Program. We also have a Bryan student who was Veteranarian Student of the Month, and that's Kayden Cravens. And we have our Career and Technical Education Student of the Month, and they are actually, they're working in commercials and live radio interviews. So participating in those live radio interviews are Lexi Allsqua, Connor Brown, and Keegan Brown. So congratulations to all of the four county students for their success. Thank you.
And we have a couple of spotlights?
Yeah, so next up, we have Mrs. Veronica Arthur. She is our English teacher at the high school, and she does an outstanding job of helping place seniors and some juniors as well into internships throughout the community to help get some work experiences. So Mrs. Arthur is going to introduce a couple of our spotlight students that she brought with her.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for having us here again tonight. I'm really excited to showcase these two exceptional students. These are the first two students that we've been able to place at the hospital. In the past, we've run into confidentiality matters and just we weren't quite sure how to get some of our kids who stay at Bryan, who don't have the benefits of the healthcare that they get out of work having, their healthcare experiences. So this year, we had these two who were able to work in some pretty unique situations. So Jordan Beck and Brooke Wheeler are going to talk to you about their placements and some of the experiences that they had. So thank you again for having them.
I'm Jordan Beck, and I was placed at the ER in the hospital, but now I'm working at Dablin.
I'm Brooke Wheeler, and I was placed in OB/Labor and Delivery Nurse.
We found a couple of things beneficial at like our placements, and one of the things I felt beneficial is like it definitely secured what I want to do in my future, which is definitely healthcare and being a nurse. Just all the things they do, it's just like, it's so hardworking and it's just one of the craziest experiences I've had. They're just so dedicated to what they do and helping people, and it's just crazy.
One of the things that I find beneficial about internship is just kind of brings me into the reality about like what the workplace is going to be like. It's really got me personally out of my shell and go and talk to people, how to prepare myself for certain situations. I mean, stepping into that internship, I really had no idea what I was going to do there and like what to expect really. But once like I was there for a while, it really did teach me really good valuable things for me to take in college.
Yeah, it taught me a lot of things like, you know, communication and talking to people like Brooke said. Communication is probably one of the hardest things for me, and it definitely took me out of my shell in that area. Like yeah, definitely a lot of things beneficial about everything. And it definitely confirmed my interest in healthcare nursing, definitely what I want to do when I'm older.
Same with me, like I was thinking about going into the dental hygienist, and once I stepped into the hospital, started my internship there, it just really made me fall in love with people there and like working with people with needs and all that. Thank you.
Thank you both, but don't run away yet, don't run away yet. I bet we have a few questions for you. I know I do, but they don't.
I always have.
I'll let them go first.
So as a junior, do you have the opportunity to continue in a similar situation next year as a senior? Or do you still like where you're actually?
We're both, oh, okay, she said junior, so I'm sure. So your next steps are actually?
All of that, yeah. Next step to you.
So is this one period of the day you go, is it set time every day? So how does that work in your schedule?
Some may have one period, some may have multiple periods. I actually had like three periods during it, and you know, like it was a long time, like it flew by.
Sure.
I was like in the middle of the day, I had two periods.
Every day or just?
Yes.
Okay, so you both have seen probably made, how you, rephrase that, first question. Have you been able to see and be with patients? Or is there some lines of confidentiality that you have to follow in the medical field?
There are definitely, yeah, there's the hip, like confidentiality. I was able to like put patients on like the vital monitors and be able to like take their vital signs and all that cool stuff.
Yeah, especially I was up in Opi and I kind of worked with like women and sometimes like people didn't want me to be there. So I had five of those rules and be in that pregnancy range. And but I was able to be there and help out like getting people prepped for surgery or like when they needed something, so.
So tell me, what's your coolest experience of all that you've had, like on the job, didn't expect it, happened? Anything stand out?
Yeah. There's one time, it was kind of like all of a sudden, but there was like this like car accident that came in, and it was just like really fast, like everyone was like rushing, and it was so high speed. And I was like, I don't know what to do because I don't know. But I just like followed and I helped, and it was just like so fast. And you gotta be like ready on the spot like you to get supplies for the nurses, whatever they need. And it was just like so crazy because it was happening so fast.
For me, I've like they've been able to like let me maybe like newborn babies, like as soon as they came out and everything. I've been able to hold them too when they let me. I've been in there when like they're like about to go into labor or like go straight into surgery and stuff like that. It's kind of a little bit chaotic. It's kind of nice to see like how the prepping process is and like what to expect before and after too, so.
So my last question, without this internship, would you ever have had any idea what these two careers actually entail? Other than watching Grey's and Abby?
I was able to shadow in an Opi because that's actually what I wanted to do before I got like the experience to go intern at the ER. And that was my first like introduction to like the nursing field. And that like kind of settled me of like what I wanted. But when I got this internship, I was like, this is definitely what I want to do. And it just was so beneficial.
Yeah, I really had no idea what to expect in like a hospital. Well, I mean, like I do like basic stuff, but like just kind of like the behind the scenes, you don't normally see of everything. So it was just really nice to see like what they do, like even after the patient's gone or like all the charting they had to do and all the stuff they had to do to get ready for the next one, so.
That's great, great. And thank you, Mrs. Arthur, too, for helping arrange all of that.
I was just going to say one more thing. I told them I was going to call them ganny picks, but they really were our ganny picks this year. And I've already started having conversations with their supervisors that they've been working with to see how we can improve the program and make some more things available for our students. Maybe even put them on a rotation where maybe they might be in the ER, but then maybe they might go to radiology or respiratory care. Just so that students who want to go into healthcare have a wide variety of experiences to maybe choose from. Or if they find their passion right where they're at, and maybe they can stay there. But we've already started to have those conversations, and without these two, who have been such great interns and so professional and just took the internship very seriously and learned and soaked up all that they could. Without them doing that, I think it would have been difficult to take these next steps that we're taking. So I'm really excited for what the future might hold, and they were part of the start, I guess, yeah, so.
This is a great opportunity to learn what it is, and I know firsthand, there's a high demand up there. So kudos to being able to have the stomach to do that. I tell my wife the same thing, it takes a special person to be able to do all of that stuff. So it's great to have firsthand opportunity to do that. I do have a question, Mrs. Arthur, about the program though, is this, how many people are in it? And what is it, what does the span of internships look like here?
Well, the number of kids who are seeking internships is increasing every year. First semester, I think we had around 50, just from first semester into second semester, we're at 60. And I know next year, just as Beth said, we're already at 60 to 65. So students are looking for ways to start to plug into their future career, or at least see if it's what they're interested in. Like Jordan said, she started at the ER in the fall, and then her schedule, some of the things that she needed to take changed, so she wasn't able to sit and work in a hospital. But it sort of depends on the student, what they have available, how many periods in the day they have. Sometimes it butts up against our academic assist, which gives them another almost 20 minutes that they can go. And if that butts up to their lunch, then that's another, you know. So we do have some students who are able to leave the building by 12:15 sometimes, sometimes by noon, and can spend part of the day there. Some of our internships are paid, depending on where they go some or not. But I always tell Mr. Allsqua, we're working on some of that, that as many interns as we have, we have that many different situations, and it just depends on the student and where they want to go. Brooke is also interning with some interior designers. It's not like she knows she wants to go into healthcare, but she's sort of following that interest that she has. And we have several students who work two or three days a week here or with a certain teacher, and then might work somewhere else in the community. Or I have interns who spend the first period of their day somewhere, they come back to school, and then they leave in later in the day. So it just, it's really depend upon the student. We're working really hard to expand in this field, though. As much as we can, we're looking for new partners. And Mr. Shaffer just operated a new partnership tonight, maybe a student who might be interested in finance, and we would love to place them, you know, right here, you know, in our community. What I love about what these two were able to do is that we're going to have a need for healthcare right here in our community, and these two, one of the worlds could come right back and, you know, raise their kids in Bryan, and they'd all have jobs. And they would have jobs, you know, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
I know we don't have any reps here from CHWC, but they really also helped open the doors for these opportunities. And that's a testament to our board as well through realizing in our conversations the conditions that we've both had, allowing those doors to open up. So it's been really nice to see these success stories, and hopefully they continue to be successful, and best of luck in all you do. Thanks again. Do we still have one more spotlight, or that is it, just administrative reports?
Wow, we're coming to the end of our winter sport season. This last weekend, we had boys basketball at Evergreen on Friday night, and then six awitments on Saturday. We were able to secure three league championships on Saturday. With our South Bay Girls Basketball Team, the Deaf Liberty Center at Wasean on Saturday morning at 9:00 AM to claim the South Bay's championship, and then our Boys Bowling. They were second in the regular season, but they won the tournament, so they ended sharing with Liberty Center, they're tournament champions. Our Girls Bowling placed third overall, but Faith Harding ended up having the highest average for the season. Our Girls Varsity secured their third straight league championship, back to back to back. The victory over a little center on Saturday afternoon. Tomorrow night is a, the athletic boosters are, they will have a fan appreciation night for our home games with Liberty Center. Freshmen at 4:45, JV at 6:00, varsity around 7:30. And that's where they're going to get away with some rally towels and t-shirts, and encourage our students to attend, and then just some participation to cheer on our teams. They've done it for every winter sport, and they've been really, really successful, at least the varsity sports. So we have kids in bowling, we're like, where are all these people coming from, the kids that are watching? And a lot of adults were there from the boosters, and it was a unique event for them. Districts swim and dive this week. We have 17 swimmers and divers competing in District of EGSU with dive on Wednesday, and then the swimmers on Friday. Bowlers competed sectionals at the plane this week with the girls are on Friday, and the boys are on Thursday. It's time for tournament season as well, and our girls with the number five seed, that's how tough, our girls team is really, really good, with the number five seed out of 12. And they're going to play Defiance on Thursday at 7:30 at Patrick Henry. With the winner there will advance to the sectional final, and Patrick Henry again, against the winner of Toledo Rogers and St. Mary's Memorial. The Boys Basketball will travel to Swan on Friday, the last NWO game with a freshman tip at F445 with the JV varsity to follow. Wrestling, late wrestling is just coming Saturday at Delta. The Boys will finish up their regular season hosting Salina on Saturday night. We have cheer practices going on as we speak, and then there are tryouts for 22-23, Russian is coming Saturday. And there is some room for some things to happen throughout, some changes and things like that, to bring some on if we need to. But we get to take care of early, and it really gets beneficial for the program. We are hosting, actually, we're hosting 15 games in the next 11 days. We're hosting the D4 sectional tournament for girls this week on Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and then boys next week on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. So it's going to be a busy next 11 days around here. Sectional Boys game is at Paulding against La Mashaunee on the 22nd. The sectional estimate tournament is Saturday, the 26th, at Defiance. You'll get into that last, the third phase of the season, the tournament phase. For our non-winter sport athletes that are going to participate in a spring sport, they start on Monday. Baseball, softball, and track start on Monday for non-winter sport athletes, and then tennis will start on Monday, March 7. A couple of things to come here, we are going to plan another spring signing day. We have several other student athletes who are going to declare their intent to participate in the sport in college. The date should be determined. We're planning another NWO leadership conference in early May, Dagan Soder here at the gym. And we are trying to finalize a fundraiser for the athletic departments, and for Raffle type event for late Debbie, where we're in the evening. So that's what I have, questions for me?
Sounds like a busy time, but lots of good stuff happening.
Thanks, yeah, very rewarding winter sports season, hopefully we have some state send offs to come here as well.
It'll be really exciting, hopefully it's easy.
Thank you.
So I wanted to update you with the dyslexia law guidebook. So if you remember, I think the last time we were here, was that December? I'm not quite sure, I don't remember. In January, the Dyslexia Committee sent the survey back out to people, and they wanted feedback. So feedback was accepted up until January 19th, and from that, they came out with a guidebook number two. And with that guidebook number two, there were some changes that some organizations wanted to share with the committee. And that meeting actually happened this morning. So hopefully we'll hear something soon with an official guidebook. But what I can tell you for sure is that the law hasn't changed, it's just what the committee is recommending. So for the 23, 22-23 school year, what has to happen is the administration of the universal screener for Tier One to all students in K3, so that'll happen next year. Administer universal screener Tier One to students in grade four through six whose parents, whose parents are guardians requested. And then administer universal screener Tier One to each student in grades one through six that transfer into the district. So that we know for sure. Anything else regarding what screener we're using? Anything regarding to professional development for staff? We know that our staff will need professional development, but we're not sure on what those hours will be because we don't know what the guidebook is going to tell us. But we're working with the EFC and other school districts, so that will point us in the right direction. I shared with you, or Mr. Barry shared with you, the iReady form, piece of paper. And on the top is the reading performance, and we use iReady as our diagnostic in reading and math. And that is where we fall according to the winter diagnostic. And we took that diagnostic the beginning of December. So you really want to see those upper numbers in your mid or above grade level and your early on grade level. You want to see the lower numbers in your reds, your yellows. So when I was looking at the data for the winter reading performance, I compared fall and winter. And I meet with teachers, I meet with teams to go over their specific data, this is building specific data. So in the fall in reading, and I'm just focusing on the two reading areas because that's the proficient, that's where we want to be. So we went from 29% in the fall to 51%, which is a 22% increase. And then in math, we went from 18% in the fall to 41%, which was a 23% increase. When I meet with teachers, I ask them, you know, how is your classroom performing, looking at your own specific data? What are your growth measures for your students? How is the class progressing? How does the current performance compare to the historical data, so August to January? And then what domains are you going to prioritize from here on out? So those are conversations that are, that are happening. Questions over that? The next thing is we have our Professional Development Day coming up this Friday. And one of the things we wanted to focus on was wellness and helping our teachers deal with anything that would help them be well, whether that's mindfulness, ways that can help them with organization. But we have Heidi Stark coming and talking to our staff in that certified and classified at the elementary. Then she's going to be talking to the high school, middle school staff in April. But her session is called A Mindful Start to Your Day, Inclusive Quick and Simple Practices for Stress Reduction. So again, focusing on that, the wellness of teachers. And the last thing that I have is I'm working with Mr. Allsqua for, and I know he'll talk about it, so I don't want to steal his thunder a little bit, working with him for our CEO Day on March 16th. And so far, we've heard back from about 14 people that are coming, and we need about 25 for our CEO Day. That's the day where every senior gets a chance to be interviewed and practice some of those real life skills that they'll use as they go into the workforce. Questions?
None of them.
All right.
Thanks, thank you for updating.
Some exciting things happening at the elementary this year, too. I feel like it's, as I look at my list, it's a lot of, we've reached that point of the year where it's a lot of fun culminating events that are occurring. So I'm going to bring you up to speed on those. First of all, I can't believe it's time to talk about the end of the trimester again, but we are getting ready to finish second trimester on February 24th, so that'll be here before we know it. Last week, students celebrated the 100th day of school, which Mr. Barry can attest is a happening day at the elementary, very much celebrated. We have special guests that join the hallways, and to be honest with you, that was a fun day for everybody K5. It's focused more younger elementary, but all students had a good day with that. Now we are moving on to the second part of the year from there on, and the kids, like I said, are looking forward to what's coming. Last week on the 11th, Ms. Miley and her class had a coffee cart in our lobby area. Her group worked with some of our support staff to create a coffee and hot chocolate bar, if you will, when staff first came in in the morning, and they served it to the staff, they greeted them, they had Valentine cards for them. Very successful first run at this, and this is something that we're looking to continue moving forward in the future. We're not sure how often, but it's an opportunity for the kids to have their own little business, if you will, in the morning to greet staff and welcome them as they come in. It was a very, very, we had a couple of kiddos that I think may just end up being baristas someday because they had a great time with it, that's for sure. Christmas for Kids way back in December, November, December, really. I don't know if you recall, but we had some rewarding events for the kiddos because they were so successful in their campaign. I should let you all know that we are in round two of the Building Dodgeball Tournament, so things are getting a little bit intense as we move through those brackets, but the kids are having fun with that. The Dental Outreach Program, we are in week two of a three-week visit from them. The Community Health Partners Business has brought the, we call it the Dental Van, that if you drive by during the day, you may see it out front, and has provided opportunities for our students to receive dental care that may or may not have the opportunity for that outside of the school day. So we're really grateful for that community program that's happening right now. I don't have the number of students that they've seen to this point, but I can tell you it's, they go out to the van groups of four or five and come back nonstop pretty much all day, so that's been very appreciated and successful. Family Literacy Night will be coming up on the 24th of February, which is our culminating event to our Fenway and Hattie, One Book One School event that's happening right now with our kiddos. They've been busy with their families reading that book, and we will have families in the building from 5:00 to 7:30 PM on the 24th. So if you have that night available, please stop out and join us, do some culinating literacy activities, fun games, events for the kids to kind of get everybody together here in the building. March 17th, and this will have another board meeting prior to this as another reminder, but that will be our grandparents' day, and I encourage all of you, if you, even though you don't have grandchildren in the building, if you are available on that day, we would love to have you come in to be a special guest for a kid who may not have a grandparent attend. That will be a part of our Right to Read Week, and on that day, we will have grade levels scheduled throughout the day to have grandparents in the building for a visit to the classroom to see what they're working on, and have an opportunity to just, you know, just hang out with them for a little while and enjoy the day. Last but not least, I spoke with you, it's been several months now, I feel like, but we've been working to have incentive programs to our kids, working on specifically on math facts and sight word reading recognition. And I want to report, just to give you a little bit of an update of where we're at with that. Our kiddos in first grade have been working on sight words, and as of today, we have 65 kiddos in the grade level that have accomplished their entire goal for the year, so that's super exciting. They've blown through all three lists of words and are working hard on those. And more importantly, in terms of the kids and the reward system, we have 20 kiddos that have received their Happy Meal from McDonald's because they have learned all of their math facts in second grade. So second grade kiddos are off to a good start with that. And I will share with you, because Mrs. Thor Myers is in here tonight, that she has, as of today, been beat by four kids in her grade levels for their math fact competition. She's been working with them, they set the timer, the kids have to complete 20 questions, 20 math facts in a minute. Mrs. Thor Myers has to complete 40, and as of now, she has had four children beat her, so she's working hard to improve that. But having fun with that nonetheless, which is the point to all of it. So like I said, lots of exciting things, kids are plugging along, as Mrs. Cox shared with the data from the iReady. They're really working towards making some very nice gains as we enter the last third of the school year. The last thing I wanted to share with you, Mrs. Arthur, in the internship program, just in our building alone, just to kind of give you guys an idea, I think on any given day, we have a pri- I think on any given day, we have approximately twenty kiddos from the high school that come in and work with our students and our teachers in the building. So we also echo the thoughts of the success of that program and the benefit that it brings right here to our own building. They come in and pull kids one-on-one, they work with small groups of kids in all areas. We have some in the art classroom rooms, we have some with our occupational therapists, and then of course our classroom teachers. But we're having, we're seeing very nice gains for our little guys and the seniors as well. So.
Any questions?
What was the date on the grandparents' day?
March seventeenth. I believe it's the Wednesday of that week, don't quote me on that, but the seventeenth of March. And that will, the entire week will be right here in the week. So yeah, if you know of others in the community that, again, don't have grandchildren that are local, but have time that they could come that day, we always try to have somebody, everybody have a buddy that day. So that would be great.
I would like to say thanks for the dodgeball. And today was awesome at Blake's eyes because it was Valentine's Day and he really appreciated it today. I asked him what he learned today, he said, I don't remember that, but it was awesome.
And he didn't come home too jacked up on sugar, right?
No, he was good. He was good. He knows better than that. But he still got his bag and he'll be speaking in his room, I'm sure at some point. Right now, he just said it was an awesome day. So keep up the good work. Thanks.
Good evening. Today's Valentine's Day, so as a reference, we brought back an event today that we haven't done since we were at the Portland building. And what the event was is we used to hand out students a half of a heart with a number on it. And their objective was to find other students in the building that had the exact same number. And one of the things that we've been talking about as guidance office staff is trying to build some community and some relationships. Because we've noticed that a lot of our students, they may go to school together, but they always don't know who their classmates are. So we had this activity that we used to do at Portland, we brought it back this year. Our middle school students had pink hearts and our high school students had red hearts. And it was, the opportunity was for them to begin to find their, find their pair in the building. Luckily, I found mine, mine was Ally Zimmerman, so I really appreciated that. But when you found your pair, then you had to go to the guidance office and you had to introduce the person. So she introduced me and I introduced her and we got a piece of candy. We handed out an awful lot of candy today. So that was, that was pretty cool. And I'd like to thank our guidance counselors for that because it was a good opportunity for our students to really get involved and connect with each other. Also, we want to give a shout out to sixth grader Adam Belze, who I don't know if you saw, was the Williams County spelling bee champion. So congratulations to him on that regards. At the current moment, we got some things going on. We are with our juniors, we're preparing them for the state A C T test on March first. That'll be an opportunity for all our juniors, whether they're at four county, college credit plus classes, wherever they might be. They'll come into the building and they'll be taking the state A C T test. And that'll be on March first. And right now, Mrs. Bassett's office is a collection of little piles of different scholarship packets and stuff like that. Students are getting submitted right now. So that's a big piece of her world and a big piece for our seniors because amazingly, folks, we have approximately sixty, sixty-one school days until graduation. So let's wrap it up quickly for our, for our seniors. As Mrs. Cox talked about, we have CEO Wednesday and that is Wednesday, March sixteenth. As she explained, this is an opportunity for our students to get some interview experience. It is open to all of our seniors, whether they're, again, whether they're at four county or wherever they might be, they are encouraged to come in. We shared out through the Google classroom that we have set up, the class of twenty-twenty-two, we shared with them a packet today that had a letter with all the information. It also had some interview suggestions and tips, and it also had the interview questions. So that way they know how to be prepared and they know what's going to be asked of them as they go through this process. We're excited that we already have fourteen people. We're looking forward, like she said, to getting twenty-five or so. And the idea then is they will come into the gym on that day and they'll go through an interview process. There'll be three rounds of interviews. And at the end, those who make it through the third round will also have the opportunity to go to Jackie Boo's for lunch. And with the CEOs, they're invited and they'll get a chance to talk with them and connect with them. Because I speak as a dad at this point, I have a senior and when she interviews, it's a lot of this, it's what they're talking about, you know? And it's, and Mr. Barry, when we did the events downtown back in December, got to see a little bit of how nervous, you know, she gets. I think this is a good opportunity for our students because interacting with adults and figuring out how to do an interview is actually very important for them. Some of them get to a point where they never have one and others, this is that type of opportunity. So it's good for them. Also, we have our middle and high school youth advisory team. They've been really busy in December. They have positivity cards to students and staffs and staff and various items around the building, trying to promote positivity as we're going into exams and the holidays. Because for students, exams and holidays are a stressful time in that regards. In January, they posted some positive coping skills and also some drug awareness posters around the building. Those are, if you get a chance and you walk into the building, you'll still see those up and around. And they're very interesting in regards to what they have out there. Currently, they are utilizing multiple formats, and I, I D, social media, the signs around the building and even little stall messages too, to promote teen dating violence awareness month, which is happening right now. What they're trying to do is inform students of dating red flags and also on how and where to get help if you were in that situation. This is not just male to female, this is also female to male. So it's also, so they want students to be aware of this in that regards. And then I've got a little bit of a, a little bit of a story here to tell you. Several months ago, I got a phone call from a gentleman out in Arizona who knows a Bryan alum, nineteen forty-six alum, by the name of Max Wertz. And he proceeded to tell me the story of Max. Max is a nineteen forty-six graduate of Bryan High School. And he left in January of that year to join the Navy. Max was a member of the football team, four-year member of the football team. He was also a member of student council. He was vice president in his junior year and he was president in his senior year. So him departing was a major giving up of his, of his life. He also, if I'm correct, we looked back and we also saw him at times with basketball. So he was very active in sports, he was very active in student government. So he's in the Navy and at some point in time while he's in the Navy, his varsity sweater disappears. And this man, Andy, would really like to help Max get his varsity sweater back. So he reaches out to me and I'm like, I don't know anything about varsity sweaters. Tell you about varsity jackets, but I don't know anything about varsity sweaters. And so I proceed to start doing some research. And as Mrs. Blake can tell you, I went to a number of sources in trying to find this information. We dug into yearbooks and so forth and got a heck of an education about what varsity sweaters were, what they represented and the whole piece. So started working on trying to get one for him to see what it was. That was an interesting trick because really nobody handles varsity sweaters anymore. But I did find it. And so once I found it, I went to our student council and I said, this is the story. And our student council, without hesitation, without any thought whatsoever, they agreed to purchase a varsity sweater for Mr. Wertz, actually Dr. Wertz. So we started working on that. I went to the athletic department, they helped me out with some of the things that I needed and so forth and so on. And thanks to places like our athletic department, Bill's Locker Room and several others. And this is the first time that anybody of a business can see. That is a varsity sweater. Aren't they cool? I looked at it and I thought, I might get myself one of those.
I mean, old styles, the styles have passed the curve back.
Absolutely, I know. So what we are going to do is we're going to pull together the football team and student council and we're going to take a photograph of them with this sweater. And then we're going to send that picture and this varsity sweater to Dr. Wertz. He is an incredible man. He turned ninety-three on December eighth. I got to talk to him at his birthday party, got to speak to his wife. And it was an incredible conversation and I look forward to the opportunity to send this to him here in the next week or so. And I'm hoping that we get to see his expression, but even just talking to the man. Remember, I'm talking to him on the day of his birthday, he's actually at his birthday party. And he was so excited about this. And I'm looking forward to making this possible, but I could not have done this without so many other people and also without our students. Our students saw the importance of this, they saw the value in this and they were very happy and very quick to support this idea. And so I can't say enough about our students in regards to it. Thank you for your time, Mrs.
Thank you. Thanks for working through that and helping him get, get away once and, you know, what he, what he recognized, I had to see that again. So congratulations to the team.
Thank you.
Their story.
That's a tough act to follow when you're talking about all this hundredth day of school and varsity sweaters. You like to come here and talk about like three-year planning and compliance type stuff. I didn't know what to mention, so you talked about the state A C T. Just a reminder to the parents of students that A C T a year ago found out that a lot of kids were missing opportunities to take the A C T because of secondary conflicts with the work ratifies. So we do offer A C T during the school day. It's reported sometimes that's a pay test and this is the free test that the state gives to all juniors on March first. So just so they can take advantage of that. The normal paying stuff, the state for the first time this year is introducing a new program called EdSteps. Normally when we apply for our federal grants or C C I P, it's a generally process. EdSteps is a new, more robust process. It's actually a three-year plan that drives our grant funding for Title One, Special Ed, maybe those sorts of. So Mrs. Cox and I are kind of working through that. It's new to everyone in the state and rolled out in three phases. We were phased two, so we have some people to lean on that that went through that process last year. But it drives our funding for the next three years. It's probably about three years. We're also up for every three years, we need to do a comprehensive safety plan for our district, for all of our buildings. This is a coordinated effort. So we're working through that right now with the police department and the fire department and also with the county emergency management association, our agency. So we're in the process of looking at those plans and what are you doing, revisions, getting them, all three of the agencies to sign off that we have a really solid plan that we can submit to the state. So not, not the exciting of student stuff, but obviously very necessary for, for our students.
Questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks. I think that's the end of the communications. So we appreciate all of you coming and joining us tonight and Kevin, Professor.
Thank you. Your normal reports are intact. As usual, I also would like to tell you that we received our, what we consider the third quarter income tax distribution we get every year at the end of January. We're very pleased it is the most we've received since fiscal nineteen. So we're glad to see that, that trend continue. And we have seen for the first time, really since the pandemic started, we're starting to see some upward movement in estimated tax payments, which, which again, we primarily associate with our business owners here in town. So very hopeful sign that we're seeing some increase there. But even to have such a significant distribution while those numbers, estimated payments are down, it shows the strength that we're seeing in, in the other areas of the local economy. So we're, we're glad to see that number continue to increase. Then moving on to my recommendations, I have amended appropriations for you again this month. The total, there is an increase across all funds of just under forty-nine thousand dollars. Then next we have a internet service agreement between Saint Patrick's and N W O C A, Northwest Ohio Computer Associations. That's an annual item, they purchase their internet service through us with Saint Patrick's. We just are involved in a contract payment goes directly from Saint Patrick's to Milwaukee. Next, we have the N W O E S C service agreement. As some of our administrators talk, we do a lot of items with the E S C each year and we contract with them at this point for the next fiscal year, just so everything is set up and they can get their staffing in place for the next school year. Next, we have the resolution accepting the amounts and rates is determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is an annual action, but this is like the third time in the last maybe four or five months that we have viewed this. This is the normal annual one setting the rates. And they, the county auditor looks every year to figure out exactly what the tax rates are to raise the appropriate amount of money and then we approve them. Next, we have a resolution to advertise for bus bids. This is through the Ohio School Council. They go out and bid buses for all of their members. We're not obligating ourselves to purchase a bus at this point, but to participate in the program, we have to authorize them to bid on our behalf. And then we have a resolution authorizing at least purchase financing for the purpose of refunding all our portion of outstanding certificates of participation. As you may recall, when we built the new high school and remodeled this building, part of our financing to that was certificate of participation that's done through the permanent improvement fund. This will allow us to go out and get the process of refinancing that to get a lower interest rate. We are actually looking to quite accelerated timeline. So with your approval on this tonight, we are looking to even begin to put that out to bid early next week to try to take advantage of the current interest rate environment. We're looking to, you know, save the districts some significant funds over time. With that, we are not obligated to finish this process. This just allows us to start it and then if we find the situation unfavorable, we can stop before we finalize that agreement. And then we want to recognize and accept the following donations. Five thousand dollars for the student assistance fund from the Northwestern Society. Two hundred dollars for Mrs. Heslop's classroom for the iReady Peachers Club. Five hundred dollars for the junior class from the Pittman Family Dental. Coffee cups, lids, sleeves for the student coffee cart project that Miss Domics spoke of from Junkman Beans, creamer and sugar as well from Cora. And then one hundred ninety-two dollars and fifteen cents for Bryan Elementary for Jessica Root Grant and that. I believe this from the Bryan Area Foundation. And then three hundred dollars for the New Quest for the sixth grade character traits.
All right, a lot of stuff going on there tonight, Kevin. I appreciate that. Everybody get that understated what's going on? So I set the motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Old business?
No.
Moving on, it's new business then.
Yeah, so we have our, later on, our two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar draft. Just to remind everyone, our school district went through a process about two years ago with Diane Savage and a wealth of staff and creative input to help develop a calendar that could meet as many needs as possible throughout the school year. Not only to help families plan ahead, but also to help a variety of activities that we host throughout the school year. So a wealth of input and time went into that. And so I looked at, we are now living out year two of three years of calendars that were passed at the time. So I have the goal now that we've had some ample time as staff and we need to look and know what our school calendar is. It is now no rotation where we always now know two years of school calendars in advance. So at this point, we know next year's school calendar, it's already available for viewing. But if, when we pass this calendar, families will now know two school years worth of dates ahead of time to allow for planning. So I've sought some input from our members and our unions and also our Board of Education here. And we've developed a draft that is very similar, very similar because the. And we've developed a draft that is very similar, very similar because the, the liking to this current calendar setup is very high. And, you know, there's always a date here or there that people like to discuss. But in general, the theory behind the format of the calendar is very light and has seemed to work out not only for our school activities, but for our families as well with the break center implemented throughout the school year. So the draft is very similar with the exception of each year, we're in a few different days as to where days land. So that is available for reviewing. This is just a draft. It starts a thirty-day review period. I will put this out to our staff, the entire staff, for their viewing as well. And we'll take action on it at our next board meeting in March.
Thanks for doing that. I think it's worth, easier to schedule around once you know the facts. So and we'll vote on that next, next month. Okay. All right. Super dead recommendations?
Yeah. So we'll start out with the administrative recommendations. So first up, we have the approval of students who have met the graduation requirements and are eligible for early graduation. So we have a list of students here. We have Caleb Blake, Bella Jackson, Aiden Manley, Dakota Vine, Jacob Miller, Jordan Schuer, Skyler Shilt, Allison Shafer and Trent Wolf, who have all met those requirements. Congratulations to them as they are eligible to receive their diploma. And we wish them the best of luck with their futures. Good job to all of them. Next up, we are looking ahead to the summer months already. Summer school registration is just around the corner. Those applications are released here. You're approximately during March, the month of March. So the courses to be offered are high school B, high school health and high school personal finance. And those are offered at a rate of one hundred dollars per course. The next two, the Purdue University, Fort Wayne M O U and the Western Governors University M O U. Our agreements between us and those universities to allow student teachers from their programs to student teach in our buildings with our students. And those are happening this spring, during this spring semester. Next up, annually, we have to renew our membership with the Ohio Basketball Athletic Association. And this is an agreement that we made with that, so we're looking to have that approved. We have the approval of the eighth grade trip itinerary. So the eighth graders annually go to Chicago, at least when there's not a COVID situation. So we're looking to hopefully bring that back. And we're looking to approve their trip itinerary. But we will note that if COVID or stipulations or any of the protocols do play a factor, they also are working on potential plan B and C if needed. So we just want to make sure they are approved to go. If the stars align, things are good. If they're not, they're also research back plans. And last but not least, we are looking to approve its studies weekly. It's the textbook edition for our social studies curriculum for grades K through five. Mrs. Cox led a series of elementary teachers. It's a parental overview as well of some of the offerings this textbook offers to our students in grades K to five as they navigate through the social studies curriculum. And they're looking to purchase that textbook so that it will last them for at least the next five years and beyond. That's known as studies. So those are all of the administrative recommendations.
Anybody have any questions on administrative recommendations? And Mark, we have other people outside of Purdue and Western Governors that have student teachers in the building now?
So yes, periodically throughout the year, we approve these agreements. You know, some of the county universities are bowling grades of university, DeFience College, maybe Trine, some local universities. But many times when it's a university from afar like that, importantly, it's actually far, it's usually a Bryant grad who is in their last semester, it's, works better for them to come back home to perform their student teaching. And we'd like to also welcome them to open arms as well if that works out.
Take a, motion to approve?
Motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations.
Is Ben? Thank you. Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you. Personal, personnel recommendations?
Yeah. So our first one, we're going to make a separate motion because of a potential conflict of interest. So we'll have one of state vote, I'm assuming. But we're looking to approve the supplemental contract for Madison Stockton for the position of the assistant softball coach. Do you motion?
I move.
Second.
Destin?
Yes.
Mike? Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on with the rest of the personnel recommendations. First up, we have a change in the salary placement schedule. That's for Chelsea Cordy, who has obtained her master's degrees. Congratulations to her. We also have a wealth of transfers and new hires here. So letter C, some of our transfers are happening as Kristoff is transferring to the head custodian in this building here at the elementary. We're going to miss him over at the field house, but we're welcoming Brandon Gamler, who will be filling in as the head custodian over at the field house now. And those will both take place effective March first. And then we also have Sean Gamler, who is transitioning from his current third shift position to the second shift position. And that will be at the middle school high school, but that will, actually it took effect today. We've got the hire of some new classified staff. So we have Hunter, Hunter Steingas as a bus driver. So we welcome him with zero years of experience. We have Michael Slapman, who will be filling in and taking the role of third shift custodian at the middle school high school. Comes to us with zero years of experience. We have Bobby Tollis, who will be at the elementary serving the role of secretary. She comes to us currently with zero years of experience. That transition was made effective February eighth. And then we have Zachary Wines, who will be hired as the second shift middle school high school custodian, coming to us with zero years of experience. And that also will be effective March first, pending we receive all of the necessary documents for background checks with that hire. Letter A, we have a mentor teacher assignment. We have Lindsay Slagle. Will be assigned to work with one of our new hires, Jordan Brown, Mr. Jordan Brown that is, effective January twenty-first and the remainder of this spring and beyond, as he completes the resident educator program. And letter F, we have the approval of our spring supplemental contracts. These are our spring activities, great male of our athletic coaches. You can see those per the exhibit. Letter G is the adjustment in supplemental pay. You'll note when we get to letter I that we did have a resignation with the weight room coordinator. So great redhead was a co-weight room coordinator and will now take on the full responsibility of weight room coordinator. So it is an adjustment to this supplemental pay because of those changes. Next up, with letter H, we have the retirement of our tech director at the middle school high school level. That's Tom Cards. And that's effective February twenty-eighth. I'm just going to elaborate a little bit more on this. This is part one of the process. We're looking to rehire him into the same position. However, as he looks to retire effective the twenty-eighth, he does have a sixty-day period where he is unable to work. So there's no ill, ill effects to his pension process. So we will be looking to rehire him effective May first. So with that, we will be following some processes, some public hearings and some advertisements to follow the process needed to retire, allow him to retire and then rehire him into that position. Letter I, resignations. We have the resignation of Scott Stanbach from the head custodial position, of Kate Keel from the elementary secretary position, Stacy Dungesther from the head custodial position, of Colin Walker from his assistant coaching position with football program, and as I noted, Joe Good from his weight room coordinator position. Letter J, we have, in addition to our classified substitute list, that's Melissa Loring. She currently works for us, but she's also willing to help assist when we are short-staffed in other capacities. And then with letter K, the non-renew, non-renewal of some substitutes will no longer be able to substitute for us. And that's Becky Penrod and Sam Louie. So those are all of the personnel recommendations. Any questions?
Along the list of personnel recommendations? If not, I will take a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendations for personnel.
Mike?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Destin?
Yes.
Thank you. And close out with the points of information.
Yeah. So just some important dates here. First up, as noted with the retire rehire process for Tom Cards, we're at our next board meeting, which is the fourteenth, we will be hosting a public hearing prior to the regular agenda. Actually, Mr. Bassett also has another public hearing for his, kind of regarding federal grants. So we will have two public hearings prior to the start of our regular agenda next month. And it'll operate much like what we do at our organizational meeting. We'll have a series of motions that we look to accept and move on. So until the next meeting, until we get to our regular agenda. Then our, speaking of, our next board of education meeting is right here, March fourteenth. And again, just to note that time change, it starts with that six o'clock P M. This week, Mike and Ben, myself and Kevin are going to meet with members of the community during our business advisor, business advisory council meeting. And we look forward to having conversations with them specifically regarding to some of our strategic planning as we look to move forward with some visions of our own here at Bryant State Schools. And then our last date with that group is set for Wednesday, the eighteenth of May.
Great. Sounds good. I will, Kevin, do we have an executive session?
I am not aware of a need for executive session this evening.
Okay. Well, I will take a follow-up or what could your?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Destin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.